So, uh, welcome everybody. It is what July 16th? August, God, thank you. August 16th. This is the work session for West Liberty City Council. So I think Omar Martinez is not Councilman Martinez is not going to be joining us tonight. Um, he has some personal issues, but he will be coming to the meeting. So, let's just start at Leo. I understand you have some, some information for us? If you're talking, you're muted. There you go. Oh, perfect.
You see the screen okay or?
Sort of.
How about now? Can you guys see the screen?
It's light, but we can see it. Yeah. Not, it's just the lighting in here, I think.
Okay, well, let me, let me just start out. We met with the Streets Committee last week and kind of went through this PowerPoint and we have some recommendations in the end. It shouldn't take too long to get through this. If you don't mind, I'd like to just kind of walk through it. The first thing we did is we talked about just where the budget was. So just to summarize where the budget is, we had started out with a budget of about 2.17 million, about 2.2 million. The current, the current estimate is at about 2.4 million. That includes everything I'll show you except for the relocation. So includes lighting and all of that, but not the relocation of the power. And I think you all know that we were gonna look at cleaning up a lot of the power in that area and that was done as part of this relocation package that is, that is included. So that's this 313 that's outside of the contract. Everything else is inside of the contract. I can't get it to go over. And as you can see here, the up at the top here, the stormwater estimate 157,000 and the sanitary estimate and the water main estimate. And just so you know, those estimates all include everything that has to do with sanitary and water. The stormwater, which is a little bigger than 155, that's strictly just the stormwater pipes and the intakes and all of that. Cause I figured that since you're just starting your stormwater, we won't be taking money, too much money from that pot. So that'll probably just be like it normally is out of road funds. But anyway, that's, that's kind of where we're at, a little bit higher than we thought. And we'll go through a few reasons why, but we'll also show you, show you some, the lighting was the big issue that we wanted to kind of go through. So this is, I guess a little smaller. This is downtown West Liberty. And as you can see, um, you've got the pendant lights, the high-low light on some poles, some poles, just a high, high, high light. And we did like that. And so we wanted to look at that one first. We also wanted to look at others around. This is a trail on the University of Iowa campus. A lot of you might've seen that in the past, but that's the kind of lighting they use. And we have, coming up here, we have prices on all of this. This is in Bettendorf, some of the new lighting they just put up that has to do with the I-74 bridge. This is what Bettendorf suggested. Again, the high-low, kind of a real simple, modern look. But with a curved pole. You can see there's a lot of that lighting down in the downtown Bettendorf area now. And then the I-74, they went to the same curve pole, but now you've got the black. I think it does look a little bit better on the I-74 bridge. So again, that's kind of the, the newer modern look. Rock Island Pavilion where my office is, they've got a hodgepodge of different types of lighting. Wanted you to kind of see what that one looks like. And the downtown area where they have trails as well as the downtown in Rock Island, they do have that pendant lighting similar to what you guys have. And then I just showed you the molying splash, splash like splash pad where they have some just pendant, no, not pendant, but some like a candle type lighting all around that. And of course, the old fashioned, this is the West Branch Trail, but there's a significant amount of trail lighting that looks very similar to this. So what are the costs on all of this? This is the, the one on the bridge. At 74. And this includes the lighting as well as the poles and mounted for about 35, $3,575 per, per fixture. And it doesn't want to go down though. This is your lighting for, for this dual lighting. That's about 3,700. So a little bit less expensive than kind of that. The more modern, but really looks good in your downtown, at least I think so. And then we just got these quotes recently from a vendor. They, they see these pictures and they're similar. This is one that I think we did up in Gutenberg just recently. And again, a little bit fancier type of a fixture that made this one more expensive. They also, you can see the, the line going off it. They had the lighting in the middle of the street also. Another option is, oh, go ahead and ask any questions. Go ahead.
I'm 47. Okay. I'm sorry. I can't see.
Forty, four seven, $4,730. And again, these are very, very recent quotes. Uh, Rainbow, this is the one for, um, University of Iowa, 4,500. It looks simple to me, but that's what the quote that we got.
No, we mustn't.
And you can see too, that this one has the, probably the reason for the cost. It has the flags, the flags on it. We don't see any electrical on any of these, meaning outlets. And that was a thing we discussed in the committee. So this is kind of a cost estimate of the entire project right now. And we're, what I'd say at the 90% done, we're just ready to wrap in the lighting and be, be a hundred percent done. Um, and there's where we, we told you about 2.4 million. That includes that alternate with the sidewalk. And it also includes right here, a lump sum cost of about 145,000 for the lighting, which included 24 poles. That seems like a lot of poles. We all thought that. But that was what our electrical said, if he meets a certain standard, and I'll go through that in a minute. So that's kind of the, the highest cost you'd see. So what, what happened at the meeting is when we discuss this type of stuff, pretty much everybody and led by Ed is, you know, 24 streetlights with fixtures is a lot. And it, it'll illuminate the heck out of the trail and the street, but probably significantly more than anywhere else in town. And our electrical engineer says that he meet, that, that to do it that way, you meet this IES RP-8 standard, which is a standard that, that a lot of people quote, it's not like a have to, it's more of a guidance type of thing. But from what I've been understanding, very, very few towns actually meet that, like in subdivisions or roads, kind of like a rainbow maxon type road that maybe in the downtown where a lot of people are walking, you'd meet that standard. Otherwise it's just something similar, but not something less than that. So the committee basically believes that utilizing fixtures that are a complement or similar to the downtown would be very, very good. And they do not think meeting this IES RP-8 is probably the best thing. Typically a road in West Liberty like this would have five or six high streetlights on it. So our thoughts were let's use that five or six high streetlights. And then in between them, we would stagger some short lights for just the trail lighting. And that will probably save us about $50,000 and it'd probably look really good. That did not include putting flagging, those flagging, as you saw in the University of Iowa, or electrical outlets in any of them for like a Christmas light type of thing. Again, I don't know that that's really that necessary out in that area, but that at this time, our, the committee decided they didn't think that would be necessary. And if we do that, then we'd be looking at, um, like I said, instead of maybe 140,000, we'd be probably somewhere around a hundred thousand dollars. Also, we think that includes all that 140,000 down to somewhere about 100 includes all of the light poles, all of the power between the poles. And it will include some underground and that would all be underground power, including underground back to where the the, the, the power poles will be relocated to the north edge of the right of way. And that's part of that $320,000. And we believe that, that, that the road project and the power relocation should probably be approved so that they can get moving on that relocation contract. So if they could get moving this year, meaning before fall, uh, on that, maybe a, you know, the next couple of months, then they could have that in place. Realizing that they have to order parts, they have to order some things for their relocation poles. And then we would do, as we'd coordinate and we were gonna have to do clearing anyway. So we'd put a line item in our contract for the civil project in this, that, that'll bid in the winter. That would give them clearing item. So then the, the, um, the electrical company won't have to put in, won't have to clear. It'll all be cleared for them. They'd come in and do the relocation. And then we come in and do the road. The actual lighting for the trail is probably one of the very last things, street lighting and lighting. So if we award this contract, say February, something like that, they're ready to go in April. It'll probably be almost fall before the lighting would actually be necessary, but we'd need to get all that relocation done ahead of that. So that's why we think we'd like to come back to you with that. And this is kind of what the ad hoc committee recommended. The committee recommends utilizing the fixtures that are similar or, or the complement downtown. The committee recommends only five or six highest streetlights. And then supplement the trail with lower pole trail lighting. And Jacob is our electrical. He was gonna figure out how much of that lower pole trail lighting we'd need, but we were thinking maybe, maybe, maybe at the most 10 poles. And then as I just mentioned to you, approve the power relocation with the road project to ensure the poles do not get delayed in, um, in the supply chain issues. From, from what we've been hearing on two or three projects I'm working on right now, the supply chain issues are starting to loosen up, but I, I guess any right now, it's best to get things, get things rolling as quick as we possibly can. And that's really all we kind of went through. I just wanted to kind of buzz through that fast. See if you guys had any questions beforehand. I think what the city manager wants to do is have you guys take a look at this. And then we'd come back at maybe the next meeting for an official approval of getting going with the relocation. I think he's got some financing things that, that would be done in the meantime. Dave, do you have anything to add to this?
No, Leo, I think that summarizes, I think the committee had talked about last week. And, uh, we do have, uh, Lee and I are meeting with finance company here around, uh, I think it's the 26th of this month. We hope to get an idea of kind of where we're at. Kind of what we're looking at before we bring it back to council.
And we do, we, we, we see this project as dovetailing really nice. I honestly think, you know, when you first talked about doing lighting, I wasn't sure it was gonna happen, but the more I started thinking about it on this road, I think it's gonna be a real showcase. As you come into town, you'd be able to see the trail lit up. I think it'll look really, really sharp for the city and maybe not be quite a gateway, but I think it'll be the, one of the very first things you see coming into town. I think that's from the, coming in from the highway anyway. And I think that'll be a, it'll be a really nice project.
The only, can we comment? The only thing I, I can think of is, um, I agree with everything pretty much that the, the committee recommended, but I do wonder if we do need a couple outlets, if there's gonna be, well, is there gonna be benches along the trail? Maybe there, if there's an outlet by one of the poles or something, someone needed to charge their phone or wanted to, you know?
That'll be a question that I could follow up with Nikki to see if there is any plans to have.
It's a good, it's a good idea, but I will tell you that adding, adding electric to the poles does add more dollars than what you might think, but I'm not saying it's a bad idea. The other, i- if money's an issue, there, there could be too, a follow-up grant that I always like to do on these. Something like the, um, oh, Iowa REAP grant sometimes. And that's when you can get benches, but you'd probably have to do like a, a landscape plan by one of those benches. And I really think that's a nice follow-up to this kind of project. Or we can add it in right now. It's not too late to add that in. To add maybe a couple of benches on each end or maybe one in the middle.
I think benches would be good. I'm, I just think of my own dad and if he's lost, then he might need to sit down for a minute before he gets to the other end.
So you're thinking on, you, you think a couple like spaced in the middle or, or would you want them in the ends and in the middle?
I don't know. How long is it? One mile?
Uh, about a half a mile.
Maybe just one in the middle.
Yeah, I think one in the middle. That's probably good. And you know what? I think might be even better than putting in the light. And this is just an idea, throwing it out there. I wish Jacob was on. On a project in Burlington recently on their riverfront, they didn't like that the, where they got caught in supply chain with, with lights, but they, they didn't want to reorder these poles. So they ended up putting just a kind of right beside some of their benches. They'd put a little like, you know, in the concrete, a outlet. And they'd run that, an outlet there. And that seemed to be a, a good way to do it too. That way they would have an outlet to do something with. But we can look into that for you.
Um, I don't know much about this project yet, but I'm thinking if we're gonna include benches, is, is there also gonna be like garbage, uh, garbage can? Or is that like, how are we gonna protect, you know, as people have a drink with them and then they throw their can on the ground or? Was that, I would have to worry about that?
We, we haven't talked about doing benches, but I mean, doing, doing trash cans. But if you do a bench, sometimes it is nice to put a trash can. The thing is, you usually do a concrete pad. Then you put your bench and then you have to secure the bench to the concrete pad. And almost the same thing with the trash can receptible. You have to, you know, because of the public and where they're located and all of that, you almost have to secure them to make sure you can get it done right. Cause this is an area that's kind of a, I don't, I don't know, say a rural area, but it's certainly not in a downtown area. So we could, we could talk to your staff about that and see what they, what they recommend. Show them some options on, on trash cans. How do you do downtown? Do you have trash cans in the downtown now?
Yeah, but I believe they were sponsored or provided for by, well, some by the Rotary Club.
And I think Rotary just, or I think they sponsored on the trail or the new sidewalk kind of at the Camperly Park.
Okay.
Some benches and some trash cans ordered through there. So.
How about, how about the other trail? The trail that goes along the, um, the railroad right away on that, that trail? Does that trail have, have trash cans on it?
No, the only trash cans there are city, the plastic blue ones that the Heritage Foundation uses, I believe.
Yeah, those are all things we could add to it.
The dog, um, bags, waste bags, you know, yeah, for dog pickup.
Yeah, I suspect this will be, I suspect this trail will get used a lot. Just, just the way a lot of these type of trails end up.
But I think this in particular will be only because of the nature where it's at, because you're dealing with a large volume of people when uh, we got games or tournaments at Dutton and then you're gonna have housing on top of it.
Yes.
Oh, I think there's going to be a constant considerable amount of, you know, volume on this path.
Hope those are great, great, great things to then look into is trash, I've got trash cans, electric outlet, kind of a pad for benches. That's all I had unless you got more questions. That was all I had for, I wanted to make sure you guys saw all that and kind of knew where we were at.
Okay. Thank you, Neil.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, um, so, uh, unless anybody else has any questions or comments on that, uh, we will move on to the ARPA, ARPA funds and talking about those and sort of what that looks like. Um, welcome to the members of the escuchamevos who have come here tonight. And so, um, essentially we, this was obviously, this is something that we voted to do, um, at the, the $700 level, um, for up to 200 people in the community. And Councilwoman Dominguez has, has spent a lot of time researching sort of methodologies or how this is going, how we could distribute the money and these types of things, but um, there were also some concerns brought up by, uh, other council members in terms of really just making sure that everyone involved, the city, the people who get the money, everything will be safe. Um, and that we're doing everything according to, you know, what the federal government, who gave us these funds, um, are, you know, what they're, what they're okay with basically. Um, so, uh, I don't know if, um, uh, David, if, if you'd like to come up here, if you don't, if you, or if you're available to answer any questions we might have, that would be, that would be wonderful. Um, so why don't we start sort of with the concerns that, that we have? Um, and, and see sort of what conversation that generates, if that's okay.
Sure. I, I had a lot of, well, initially I, I am for it, but I do have a lot of concerns when I really step back and look at it, especially per guidance from, uh, our expertise, legal, accounting in how equitable it would be only because, um, Iowa City did a lottery system and they only had so many to offer in that lottery. And, and now it sounds like, you know, it still didn't cover everybody that could potentially have been qualified for. So I feel like even though we put a cap at 200, I still feel like we're going to be turning away people that if this is supposed to be equitable for everybody involved, then ultimately the bottom line is it won't be, it won't be equitable.
Do we know why? Was it something in how the funds had to be distributed or something as why Iowa City did the lottery? Was that to try to make sure that it was as equitable as possible? Or do we know?
From, from what I read, and I could be wrong, there were a couple supervisors that um, wanted to do it one way. And there was other supervisors who did not agree. So this was a compromise. The lottery was a compromises from what I understood. Yeah.
David, do you know?
I mean, I would just have if they voted tonight, go upon the last 319 people, um, so there was no, nobody that actually wanted the lottery. They went back and, and figured out a way to to get everybody done. Our, our figure for 200 votes in West Liberty was based on, um, an analysis of US Census Bureau data for West Liberty, 2020. So to try to estimate the floor of, um, the scooter workers that are, you know, 18 to 75 years old. So, so that's how we came up with that figure. It could be an undercount. We're not gonna know and probably try it, but that, that should be a decent estimate. Hopefully we can figure it out, you know?
So the lottery was not, uh, uh, to further, not legitimize, but make it more copacetic or anything. It was just sort of a compromise with how they distributed the funds. What's?
There are kind of thousands and thousands of people. Around they have the application period of like 40 days. So only about 20 plus, 2300 people applied. 75% were funded right away. And again, today, like literally they're, they're going right now, obviously the county, the 40, 400 people. Cause they didn't want to leave anybody behind. But it was as critical of the guesses they could get to. And then they made adjustments out of that.
Yeah, I, I can't honestly see that, that happening here. I just, I can't see that happening here just because we have such a limited amount of resources and funds.
Well, we, we put our 200 number out there based on the best census data we have. So that's how much you, you want. And people are showing up, people. It's only 25% of people.
Mike, you're like doing a lottery is that you have this, uh, you know, this, this period of like 20 days or 40 days or whatever. And you have to wait until you get all the applications at the end and then you do the lottery, right? But like, these people need this money now. I mean, they needed it last month. So can we, yeah, can we just fund them as they come in and say, we will fund the first 200 applications? And then if there are more than that, then sorry, we can revisit the issue or something. But I mean, is there any way to just fund them as they come in so that people can get this now?
Dave, you had said that there were certain policies, you know, in my, you know?
Nathan, uh, I asked Nathan to join since Ashley was new, so he could, I'll talk about the legalities.
Okay.
From the city standpoint. So Nathan, if you'd like to jump in.
I'm sorry, I, it's, it's a little hard to hear. What was the specific question?
Just looking at, I, I think part of what, um, both originally discussed was, you know, there were some legalities and things the city would um, need to do from the standpoint, I think from, from, from the legal team as well as I think from the mayor's office. I think Sherry can talk about that. But, uh, um, Ms. Smith is a new councilwoman here tonight. And that's why I kind of asked you to be on uh, for this discussion to try to help answer some of these questions on the legal front.
Sure.
And, and I think what Mayor was asking for, you know, what, you know, we talked about, I think one of the previous meetings that you, um, zoomed in on is that, I mean, if the city were, were to do this, um, there are some policies and guidelines and things that the city would be required to have set up to make sure that we could account for these funds in the appropriate manner in case the federal government came back and decided to call back. Funds thinking we used them inappropriately.
Correct. So we, we've submitted the two, I think, uh, two-part memorandum on the ARPA, um, usage. Despite, despite what, um, Johnson County has done, we're not convinced at all that, of the legality or the propriety of that. But putting that matter aside for the moment, there is obviously a clear, um, issue of documentation, both in terms of how applicants identify and prove their identity. As I understand, uh, Johnson County, and I'm not saying theirs is the end-all, be-all program, but they had an extensive documentation requirement for applicants. The, or another concern is with the proportionality aspect of it is, um, the 200 number, the number 200 people. Uh, I don't know that that, uh, is substantiated by anything. It, it, does that constitute? You know, half of the available population, does that constitute a quarter? Is it a tenth? You know, there's, there's, uh, as I've seen, no, um, substantiation of that. So knowing how to allocate the money, it really picking a number and then picking, uh, an amount of people to give it to is kind of a ready fire aim. Uh, I think from a legal perspective, it's going to be important to have the ducks in a row before funds are authorized and earmarked. And I think that's part of the fight that you've seen in Johnson County. Um, in terms of, uh, you know, what they had originally wanted to do was, and I think the escuchamevos folks requested that here as well, which is the, um, uh, funding of folks who were excluded from the original, uh, stimulus payments, presumably based on undocumented status. We're not convinced that that is an appropriate grouping that meets the requirements of ARPA as outlined in our memorandum. Now, that's our advice to council. Council can certainly do what they want and, 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 um, you know, we would just want council to be clear on what we perceive the risks to be in doing so.
So I have a, I have an idea. I have the, the 400-page final rule here that, um, Sherry was kind enough to print out over and over and over and over again. It says that communities of color, which West Liberty is a community of color. We are a majority community of color is more impacted because of COVID-19. And these are specifically what these funds are. So instead of making a number, we're gonna give 200 out. Why don't we just say we have $80,000, $100,000? And this is how much we're giving out, the 700. And until that money is gone, we can, we can give it out to people who, who qualify. And I also want to remind folks that last council meeting, we approved to give a business like $200,000 or something. And all they had to do was sign an affidavit saying that everything on this forum was true. And that West Liberty is not responsible if. And that West Liberty is not responsible if they're lying, basically. So what what makes it different from trusting our own citizens or own residents that live here in our community? What's the difference between giving two hundred thousand dollars to someone local that wants to open a business that just has to sign an affidavit? Um what's the difference between not, you know, being able to trust our own residents that they're being truthful? And that they're taking responsibility and that they need this money.
Well, two hundred thousand dollars was a grant proposal submitted on behalf of those individuals from. Wheeling and those are state programs that pay in dollars allocated for housing.
They. Which this is also allocated to help disproportionately economically impacted communities of color.
But 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 what I'm trying to say is that two hundred thousand was a state program that anybody wanted to me. Those dollars are still available through the state for housing projects if people want to create new housing. And but these, you know, the two that we did, they're creating. One program is I I believe it's five new apartments along commercial space. And the other one is commercial space with two housing units and that was us. That second one, the one on Spencer was a program that you know that just came out about a year ago, so it's fairly new, but.
Yeah, I know what they are, but I'm saying all that person had to do was sign an affidavit saying they were telling the truth. That's what I read in my packet.
That's that is they have to go through an application process that's vetted out through a board.
And.
Do they have to provide their social security?
They have to provide, they have a large packet of documentation. Um when it's a business, um not only do they have to provide their business information. And then they're registered through the Secretary of State, but they also have to identify their personal information. So and those those programs are open to any anyone. Um and anyone can apply, but again, just like with. Um those type of programs, you have to meet certain. There there are certain requirements that have to be met. There are certain rules. There's policies that they have to abide by in order to even qualify. There are sub there are several different levels that they go through. They go through a a review process, then it goes, then there those are determined and then it goes to another review process. And then it comes down to a final decision by that board. So really, when it becomes, it comes back to the city, that process is. It's it's already been done and it's pretty much a a no fail because the state is employing those programs. Have gone through all of those processes and from what. You know, and from our perspective and working with the CPA. It's not a question about giving the money. It's we have to have a policy and a procedure in place.
Which I created.
But it has to be reviewed by the.
Yes, it does.
And our CPA is also um has concerns. That it's not at the federal level, it's at because we're a city government. And how you um have to make sure that you do not. Um segregate or separate all of your community members. That means everybody should be able, like money has to be distributed equally among the whole community.
So you're saying that everybody has to benefit from the ARPA funds?
Yes.
So what's the difference between shop with a cop? When we do that?
Because that's that's a local program and I.
Okay, you don't need to answer the questions. I'm frustrated and I've been frustrated for months because. I've actually read stuff, legal stuff that says we can give this money to our people who live here who are disproportionately impacted. I've read over and over and over again that. And they did it twice in the final rule that we hear your concerns and yes. You can give these people these money, this money. You know, I read it over and over again. I've sent it to our lawyers. I don't feel like they've read it at all. You know, it it and it doesn't make sense. We have not gotten any good reason other than, oh, they might take it back.
We responded that um Councilwoman Dominguez, uh we have read the rule. We have um. Uh considered everything. Uh we've asked you for any sort of further documentation you have either from the, I think it was the Catholic workers. Or from the Treasury folks. I haven't received anything other than what we were forwarded, I believe in April. Um with all due respect, you're 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 making emotional arguments that don't hold water.
Right now, Nathan.
Okay, that would be helpful. So but what I'm gonna say is, I completely understand the appeal of an argument saying that here's folks who need help. We have this money, let's help them, but we are. We are, as your lawyers, are trying to make sure you stay in compliance with federal law. We've given you an opinion as to what we think that federal law requires. Now, do you have to follow it? Absolutely not. Do we think that's a good idea if you don't want to follow it? Absolutely not. But um you know, it to to compare it to these other programs is really apples and oranges. And um you know, I I think that um. Letting pressure um from whomever. Dictate policy without first having investigated the policy, um without us having had a chance to review what. What your proposed dispersal mechanism is is not a good idea. Furthermore, you're quite correct that the rule does. Allow and even encourage the ARPA funds to be used for disproportionately impacted communities. Um that does not mean that there can be a racial preference implicit within that. Um that is generally prohibited by federal law. But beyond that. A finding would need to be made substantiated with showing evidence and the like. That whatever proposal the council makes and adopts does in fact favor uh or does in fact benefit disproportionately. Uh impacted communities. So it's one thing to say these folks were hurt. But that probably doesn't pass muster as we read the regulations. So I'm sorry that you disagree. You know, you certainly don't have to take our advice, but you've you've asked for it, we've given it, and I'm sorry that you're frustrated with it, but that's. We think that this is a a bad idea as presently constituted and not necessarily in compliance with federal law.
Um if if I may, I know I'm very new to this, but I've read as much as I can in the last couple weeks and I I did see the proposal that. Councilmember Dominguez wrote and I mean, there was nothing in it in terms of um documenting people's ethnicity in order for being valid for this money. It was all about. Can you prove that your income falls below this level? Can you prove that you were impacted negatively by COVID because you had um unexpected childcare costs? Can you prove? And so it it asked for specific documentation from a chart that that was included in. And I thought it all, I mean, I'm not a lawyer, but I I thought it made absolute sense. I could not see any kind of negative bias in it whatsoever and I and I did read. The the as much as I could in a day of the PDF that you sent us and from what I can understand, nothing in your proposal would be against what. That what this PDF, this hundred thousand page media says, so I I I.
The proposal that I let you see too was the same one I sent him months ago and it also um. Was what he had said a couple council meetings ago that we should um mimic Johnson County. It was based on Johnson County's. So it is the charts that Johnson County uses that, you know, our attorney said that we should look at and um.
Well, I I and I and that sounds a lot better than what I was hearing. I I don't recall having seen those. Um however, I will say that. Uh our advice was not that you should do what Johnson County is doing. Our advice was that if you're going to do this, you should at least do what Johnson County is doing. In terms of the uh rigor of the documentation and um. Uh kind of pre and post verification of the efficacy of the use of the funds.
Let me pause this for just a moment. I want to hear from Sherry about what the the full scope, everything you know about the financial or what the CPA said or. Or Lee or or whomever, if possible.
Okay, so I spoke with our CPA and he said that number one. He would tell us to follow our attorney's advice. Whatever our attorney says, that's what he will tell you to follow. However. If we choose to move forward, we have got to make sure that we have all the documentation in place. From start to finish in order so. You're obviously gonna have the application, you're gonna have some sort of. Identification of some sort type to ID these people. The other thing, the only other concern was um. We as a city would not know whether or not somebody received those funds or. That portion of it, so we wouldn't be able to prove whether or not. So what we would need to do is make sure that we have somewhere on there. This signature stating, I never received these funds because it's gonna not. That we have to make sure that we are following the same procedure through everyone. The other concern was um, I know we had mentioned in the beginning having somebody else distribute the funds. The city would need to be the one that is in control of those funds and my only concern would be. How are we going to have the staff to do that? So that was the other um conversation that we had is making sure that we have something in place. For the city distributing those funds.
Like a workflow and.
Correct.
Right, yeah. And let me let me ask this too. Uh perhaps this is a question for Nathan, if you could, can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Um what if ra uh i- is it? Something that kind of helps some of the legal? Problems or issues if we were to say we want to give a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, it's a pot, everybody who wants to. Fill out an application. And uh everybody will get something. You know, like we'll just like it might not be everybody, if more than two hundred people apply. Or would that be the same thing, just a different way of doing it? Do you know what I mean? Like, cause that opens it up to everybody. And then we figure out how many folks uh who meet the criteria applied. And then we say, okay, well, two hundred and fifty people applied, that means everybody gets six hundred dollars or whatever the math turns out to be is. Would that help at all if we did it like in a we're. A different sort of way or are we still facing the same issues?
I think that does help there. Um and and a couple of reasons. First, um doing that. Um opening up the pool helps make sure the proportionality requirement is observed if you. Um if you restrict it, the more you restrict it to a subset of the population. The more work you're gonna have to do to justify the proportionality of it. If you open it up to anyone who's disproportionately impacted and can demonstrate that in. In some acceptable way, then um that allays my concerns greatly on the on the selection side now. Um there is also um the the concerns would remain on the distribution and the and the documentation of that, the procedure. But the the um the universe of applicants, whether you do it. We're just gonna see how many people there are and we're gonna divide it evenly or you do a lottery or you cut it off after so many. I mean, I think those are all. Appropriate ways of doing it according to the guidance. Um but yeah, the 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 primary concern we have. Is initially and 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 perhaps council has moved beyond this and and we're still guilty of of um. Laboring with a misapprehension, but the original intention that we perceived was that um. This was intended to be given solely to undocumented workers who were unable to participate in. And that's what we have a a large amount of concern with. The farther you move away or rather the farther you move toward a a more generally inclusive. Um equitable policy, we we are more comfortable with that.
And we fixed that way back in June when we opened it up to everybody.
Can I can I say something? I again, I still have concerns. I am sticking to. I'm sticking to the judgment of the attorneys because if you open it up to everybody. Again, you're putting the burden on the staff. And then secondly, how do you determine that? If you give it to college students that that didn't get any stimulus money, well. Were they dependents? If you give it to the elderly that didn't get any stimulus money, well. They didn't work during twenty twenty, they didn't pay into the tax taxes. I mean, because they weren't eligible for stimulus because they didn't put in any anything into the taxes.
That's not, that's not what that means here.
Councilwoman Baron, if if I might clarify, um I think you you're absolutely right that it's it it's impossible to know with the. With that level of, you know, uh empirical certainty about anything you do. I think the. What the law requires according to our our reading of it is that the council or whoever the body is. Make a determination that is reasonably defensible and reasonably reasonably ascertainable. Are you gonna get some people who probably shouldn't? Certainly, you know, the larger the program is, that that's more likely. Um but i- if you are able to articulate um a good selection criteria and a good selection process. That's gonna go a lot of the way toward alleviating the concern that we have. I don't mean to contradict you, I just wanted to clarify.
Uh I uh uh again, I still don't think we're we're at the ability to do that with the staffing that we have. And with having to administrate that and create that, I I just I just don't agree we have that capacity. I think that money needs to go to. Uh the city in general to help with what everybody can utilize and take it and take advantage of. And that's emergency response that would be going into infrastructure, that would be helping to set up a. Uh something that everybody in the community, no matter where but background you're from, whatever. There would be none of that vetting in place. It just goes to helping the city. In those avenues.
So it it sounds like maybe we have two main issues. We have the issue of eligibility and whether or not that's equitable. And then we also have the issue of. Do we have the staff in order to process this money checks, right? So as I'm I'm looking at the eligibility criteria that you sent me today and it looks like you have to. It just it just says low to moderate income with documented hardship. And who have been excluded from federal stimulus programs since March. Doesn't say an undocumented person. It doesn't say has to have a social security number. It just says here are the documents you need to prove that you are low income and here's how you can prove that you did not get a a as you know, a stimulus check. So I I can't see how that is inequitable because that that's that's open to anybody who meets those guidelines and. And I would argue that this does benefit the entire city because if we're not taking care of our most at risk population. Then we're not taking care of our community and these are people who are processing our food and these are the people who are, you know, working. At services that we use every day and they have children and if their children can't do their homework because they couldn't charge their Chromebook because their electricity got shut off. Then that's affecting the school system and I just I think it, I think it really does benefit the entire community, even though it doesn't look like. A hundred percent of people are gonna walk away with a check. I think it it gives a check to the people who need it the most, who are impacted the most. And I mean, I I guess I don't. I don't know a lot about what goes on behind the scenes in terms of writing checks, so I can't say it take it's gonna take ten hours of of labor to make two hundred check. I have no idea, but. I mean, if it's something that like I could volunteer time to come in on Saturday and help write checks. More and I'm sure the churches would be willing to help send volunteers to do this and I and I and I don't hope it works like that, but I just can, sure, again.
How did it work with Johnson County um?
The application, but we helped over six hundred people apply for those. And we sat with them, we free we free screened all of them, make sure they have the required documentation, which again was. A self certification of proof of income and a self certification at need. That met all the treasury requirements. There's additional guidance from the Treasury Department in Johnson County interpreting the final rule. Clearly said a subset of ineligible population is okay. Clearly said checks to people who did not receive federal stimulus checks was okay. Clearly said self attestations. Um was okay. So there's absolutely no legal question about this. There really is a political role question. Some people don't want it, but that has nothing to do with legality of the program. We believe that two hundred people is not gonna be an overdue burden and we again. Like we've been saying for ten months, stand ready to help pre pre-screen and reach out to impacted community members. And help the city pre-screen um applicants so they can show up with the documents in order with whatever way you decide to distribute the money. And to take the load off.
Well, it it sounds like, if I may interrupt, it sounds like that's not the issue and even from what the attorneys, it's the it's the. The second part, it's it's the accounting, it's the. It it it's the distribution and what that looks like.
Because we're we're required, so we're required to collect. It it has to have a tax identification number. So I guess that's my question. I don't know how Johnson County um is able to get around having a social security or a. I mean.
Can I can I ask that? So they were very, very clear when they made the decision to. Fund the program exclusively through our funding rather than through general funding. That they were gonna do it through ours specifically because they would would not require a ten ninety nine. It would not require a social security number. It would not require publicizing anybody's data. You would need a court order. From a judge before you had to share a single document with anybody. And the application, they save a record. So every single person that applied that was ineligible, they have a record of their proof of income, their proof of identity, their proof of residency. They check some boxes about what food stamps, the treasury will assume that you were. They check some boxes about what, food stamps, the treasury will assume that you were disproportionately impacted. If you're on Medicaid, the rule assumes you are disproportionately impacted. So you can check all that stuff off and you can build a case, record by record, in case the IRS or anybody comes down the road and wants to see the documents. It's all there and it's all very defensible and it's all built around proving your impact, your negative impact in the pandemic, just like we're talking about.
How did, uh, how did Iowa City, or rather Johnson County specifically disperse the funds if they're not, um, getting social security numbers?
A check's been held banked to an individual.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you, I'm sorry, sir.
A check to the individual that came in the mail and then the people cash the checks, it's like, just like.
Okay, so they're able, apparently they're able to cash a checks, okay. Um, and did, did they take, they, they maintained addresses? How are they tracking the, um, the efficacy of the distribution of the funds toward, um, uh, serving the goals that they're looking for?
Like, how do people spend the money or?
Well, the, the obvious, the obvious idea is to help disproportionately impacted people is, is the extent of their documentation of how they're helping people? Kind of the, the post-mortem of it, is it simply, well, we gave X guy five hundred bucks and that's how we helped him? Or is it go beyond that?
Well, to be eligible for the program, you had to be low to moderate income, forty-five thousand dollars or under. That, that was for a single adult, so a change event, you have kids and dependents and stuff. Number two, you had to have a, um, negative economic impact from the pandemic, such as loss of income, loss of employment, um, increased need for food and rent assistance, some kind of qualifier like that. Again, it's all in the federal rule. And then third, there was an optional question, did you receive a, a federal stimulus check or not?
And that, that's all on the front end though. I'm talking about the post-disbursement verification of how well the program worked.
It's going to be report, reporting.
Correct.
That'd be like, could at that, like, would that be something we could, like, require recipients to fill out a post-survey? Like, a qualitative survey, not necessarily quantitative, I mean, we could do different.
For instance, on the program, they're sending a survey out, all twenty-three hundred people that, that applied, asking them how they spent the money, whether to reduce household debt or what. And then of that subset, they'll call some people and ask for interviews.
And that's ARPA, ARPA program or Johnson County?
It's Johnson.
Johnson County.
But it's for the reporting.
Right, for the reporting, okay. Which again, though, surveys and data collect, I mean, that is, that is a ton of staff time too.
Yeah. And yeah, we're not, we're certainly not opining on the staff time issue, we're opining on legal. Yeah, if you have all of that enshrined in a written policy that is on file and is followed and, you know, is, with fidelity and can be documented, that alleviates, I would say, the majority of our concerns.
So, and then my only other question is, is there any difficulty? So when the city issues a check, um, so for some may not have a bank account or, I mean, what's their ability to be able to transact on those checks? Like, I, and that's just an, an honest concern because I, I can see that, you know, may be an issue.
Yeah, I mean, like, some people can go to Walmart or pay it in a new place, like, obviously that's like discouraged because of the high fees of HR.
Exactly.
But the county banks, with those banks, and those bank has a policy that if you have a check, or if you need some house bank, even if you do not have an account at a house bank, who will have the check for you to re-charge? So most people have bank accounts, most people can figure something out, like they're resourceful, that cashing the check's not going to be a problem. You'll have verified addresses, so as long as it gets in the mail, people are going to get the check. Um, but for those very few people who may have had an issue, they just went straight to health bank and were able to cash it with no fee.
Yeah, I mean, typically with the federal, I mean, even with our local banks, as long as it's a check off of a local bank and you have proper identification that matches the information on there. I, I just, again, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, if you're going to issue a check, that they're going to have a way, you know, to be able to transact on that check.
Oh, the other thing I think you want to worry about is, you know, uh, we've certainly seen a, a large degree or a large number of, um, public information and records requests. You know, I, I, I heard a little bit about what, um, the gentleman said with regard to confidentiality, but I'm not at all confident that at certain level, uh, if not individual names, but the disbursement records would be a public record subject to, um, uh, discovery by and through that process. So you'd want to track it for that purpose.
Well, all of the people that benefit from this are not going to be undocumented. So good luck trying to sort through every single name and try to track people down just to see if they're undocumented or not. I don't think anybody's going to take their time to do that.
Wasn't talking about that.
Oh, that's what it's.
No, I mean, the public records, um, request because of all of the personal information.
Right, they, if they get a list of names of who benefited from the program.
They, they can actually, as of, of, with a public worker, they can request the, there's nothing protecting the application process. There's nothing protecting the information, um, from a public records request.
Yeah, I mean, you know, if you try to fit in your FBI file and they black out people's personal information, and it's absolutely no different. Like Johnson County's been very clear that they will keep confidential everybody's identifying information, such as their name or their home address. That's not information that's subject to a public records request. It's confidential, private, personal information. And they can pry it out of the city's hands with a court order or, or you don't have to share it.
Well, we, and what I'm saying is additional to it, we would have to read. So then it's the time to redact. So if an individual comes in and asks for the public record, there's part, part of that information that has to be released. And this is coming from the Iowa Public Records Board. And then we would have to redact any of that information on that record. It could be possible that the entire information would be redacted, but we are still required to, to provide the, the process of the public record.
That's a hypothetical and, and it's not an excuse to not do it.
I currently go through public records and I've had a lot of them that have access information. So it, it's not a hypothetical on my part because I live it almost daily.
So you process the Freedom of Information Act request as part of your job as a civil servant all the time? So this will be no different?
No, I'm just saying that individuals, again, it's the time in redacting all of that documentation. And depending on how many applicants you have, I'm, I'm not saying it can't be done. I'm saying in consideration, the time that it takes to provide that public record.
And this, the type of stuff just has to be part of the discussion, you know, because there, there's the, I think, I, I mean, it sounds like we've come a long way on the first part, like the, the, the getting the people to the eligibility. And now then it's, it's going to be a conversation, um, between council and city and, and you folks to figure out the best way, um, that, uh, to disperse it if you, to, to send the money out.
And Madam Mayor, and I just, I want, um, David and I want the org, I want the group to understand, I'm not making those comments because I'm, I'm pushing back that we don't want to do that.
No, I asked for them too.
Yeah, they, they, the board here, they're going to, as, as day-to-day operations and the impact of this, it, it also has to be very understood and, and, and working with the staff to know that, you know, there are other day-to-day operation things that require timely work to be done. And that, you know, from a performance and evaluation, that, um, our board understands that in order, that they understand the work that can be involved in, in making this a, an opportunity and, and moving it forward, at the same time, understanding that there are other priorities on a day-to-day basis that have to be met. And in just being aware of how it could impact performance a- at the, at the personnel level.
So what I can do, I can, I can volunteer my time to City Hall and make a cop, redact a copy of every application, just in case. And then you'll have it there as a packet and all you have to do is send it.
You can't do that though.
Why, I'm a councilwoman.
No, you can't because it's.
Cause the mayor, she can, but she can see anything.
No, it, it, I, I'm not going to go, the clerk is the official records keeper.
Okay.
So the clerk is the one who has to handle the processing of all of that documentation. It's not a, it's not that it's not appreciated, it's not that it's not, it, it, it would be wonderful if I could divide up more of that type of work. It's just that does fall under the responsibility and the liability of the clerk is the official.
So if they are doing the, the pre-processing and application, if we do that.
Our CPA is telling us they cannot do that. That all has to stay within the city. That's our auditor saying because.
Like, is a great, like, if they're helping them fill out the application and stuff, that's fine. But then the application would need to come to us to review and then to distribute those funds.
So why can't they fill out two and redact one of them and put it together just?
Well, let's, let's not get into the nitty-gritty of it. What I'd like to do, we've got, this is one of those months where we have two weeks before our next council meeting. So perhaps I'm hoping in those two weeks, Councilwoman Dominguez, you and I, or anybody, I guess who wants to join can meet with city and talk about their, like, what with your proposed, um, procedures? And figure out what that looks like to do so that we can come back at our first council meeting of next month and be like, and present like, okay, this is what we're going to do, this is how we're going to do it. So we can let's vote on it for, that, and let's vote on it for the resolution. I mean, I don't know if two weeks is too aggressive of a timeline.
It's going to be aggressive for us simply because we're, a- and if you run through our notes, right now, we're, we're pulling audits. Um, we also have deadlines on, uh, electric reports and things. It's not that it can't be done, um, and council member Dominguez is already put together a proposal. Um, and we have that information, um, then on the other side of it, we can have the auditor review it and see if they, if he can provide us some, um, information based on what he's communicated and then get it on over to Nathan and then, and, and bring it back as a, a proposed, um, policy.
Right, and, and Lee, I would just add quickly that, uh, the, the alleviation of our concerns is obviously subject to what the actual policy says, you know, I'm, I'm going on representations here this evening, but the, the devil would be in the details.
Well, and you're pretty, you're, I mean, you've done so much of this legwork. So, uh, would, I mean, I guess with the second meeting in September, if we said like, that's it, that's when we're going to do it, that's when we're going to pass the resolution, let's hit that timeline, is that something that's more feasible? Or just with the work that you have? And I, and if, if you want, we, we don't have to, we can talk about that timeline privately, um, but can, do you think it's something we could get a timeline together for something like this? That, or with just the demands on the city staff and?
If you propose it, and, and again, I mean.
Okay.
If that's what you want it, if you want a resolution by the first meeting in September.
No, not the first.
Okay, second meeting in September, then.
Then we'll. Let's do it. Okay, um, all right, then let's set a timeline for the second meeting of September.
Do you want a work session? I mean, you, you don't have to vote on it, but I guess what I would recommend is a work session at that second meeting so you can, we, you know, all of, all, everyone involved can go through that process, um, go over the information and, and, and be prepared. So then that way you're, you're, you've worked through the things and prepared to, uh, be ready for that resolution.
And that would include, I mean, I would want to meet with city staff, that, you know, that sort of thing as well.
But you know what, again, I just want you to understand that, I mean, it, it, it's going to, um, we can move it, but it's going to take, and we also have to make sure that we're not only talking about city staff here, we're talking about, um, you know, our outside support with our auditor and, and our legal staff. So we have to be, you know, understanding of their time as well.
I mean, what's the typical turnaround for submitting a document to a CPA and getting it back and saying, yes, this is okay or no, this isn't? So like a few days, is it a few weeks?
So he wouldn't approve the document, you would just tell him that there's anything that needed to be added.
Okay.
Or when they're looking through our documents. And there is, when they do our audit, there's huge checklist.
Sure.
To make sure that we have everything. So whatever the policy or procedure, I've never seen it. So whatever you have proposed, then I can send it and say, hey, oh, you missed anything?
Right.
Anything that from the audit side that you would need to see that we don't have listed on here.
And if you could estimate how long that would be, do you think a few days?
He's in the middle of audit right now, so I don't know.
Okay.
Because he's doing not only our city, but they're doing multiple other cities right now as well. So I don't know how long it would take. Typically, he's pretty quick at getting back.
Okay.
Um, it is seven thirty-six, so I apologize for, for going over on the work session. Um, does council want just a little break? Everybody want just a little break, five minutes before we come back? Is that okay to start the meeting a little bit late?
I don't think one, but whatever you want to do is fine.
Okay. Or do you, Kara, do you need a little break or whatever the majority wants?
That's fine.
Okay, can you need a break, Mayor? Uh, sure, maybe. No, I mean, yeah, let's give it like, let's come back at seven forty, just take a, and come back in like three minutes.